Welcome to our city council meeting of September 5th, 2017. Thank you all for being here, I appreciate it, we appreciate it. Your interest in being here tells us that you care about the place you live in. And that's just, that's a wonderful thing. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with a roll call.
Mayor Downey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke.
President.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Gase.
President.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Weddham.
Here.
Manager McKee.
Here.
Attorney Bloor.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I've invited Councilmember Weddham to lead us in a place of allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get right into the meeting here and our agenda which will take us now to public comment period. I don't have a sign up sheet yet, here it comes. Okay, I noticed we have four names here. I've been meaning to do this for at least a couple of weeks now and this would be a good time for me to do it. We have four names here on the sign up sheet which includes residents or business owners who reside in the city limits of Port Angeles and an individual who lives outside of our city limits. I think what I'd like to do, and we'll try to do it for future meetings as well, is invite those who wish to make a public comment that live in the city limits of Port Angeles to give you a chance to go first. As time and circumstances permit, we will then invite those who live beyond our city limits to also address us. We want to hear from any and all, but I think it's appropriate we give those of you who live within our city limits the first shot. There will in fact be two city, two public comment periods, this being the first one. We will invite you to speak for up to three minutes. The green light will come on at the beginning of your remarks, followed by a yellow light up by the podium and then lastly a red light which means, the yellow light is about close to two and a half minutes into your comments as can be and that knowing then you have a chance to wrap up your remarks. With what I just said, let me invite first Tyson Mink to come to the podium first, followed by Elizabeth Dunn, Janice Wheeler, and then Bill Whitten. So, time is yours.
Greetings, my name's Tyson Mink, resident of Woodby Avenue here in Port Angeles. And tonight I want to call attention, a beautiful park, a beautiful natural resource that we have in our town. And this park is called Lyons Park, it's very close to the new Sea Ridge development. And one of the most prominent features in Lyons Park is a 50 to 60-year-old sequoia tree that's on the south, let's see, that's the southwest corner of the park. Currently, there is some talk about removing the tree. And I invite each and everyone here to come and visit this park, come and see this beautiful organism that's alive, flourishing, happy, and tell us what you think, like enjoy its shade, watch birds fly in and out of its branches, and think how it contributes positively to the health of our citizens and the health of our neighborhood. And I want to invite everyone to think what trees mean to the economy of this town, both standing and on the ground and moving through production. That's it, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Dunn.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good evening, sorry, Mayor, City Council. My name is Elizabeth Dunn and I'm also here to testify about the over 60-year-old sequoia tree in Lyons Park. If you haven't visited the tree, I also urge you to visit the tree. It'll make it clear why we need to come up with solutions to preserve this tree. It's a community asset, kids come to play under the tree, specifically they come to the park to play under this tree. I'd wondered if I was the only one that cared about this tree in the community, so I put together a petition to start to talk to my community and my neighbors, because I live on Woodby Avenue, and I found out that I wasn't the only one. And after only an hour and a half of walking around just one part of Woodby Avenue, I got two pages of signatures of citizens who are concerned about the idea that this tree would be removed. And they're asking the city council and they're asking the Parks Department to look for solutions to be able to preserve this tree. Now, I learned that this tree was up for potential basically being cut down by the private property owner who has a driveway that is adjacent to the park. And she has concerns about the tree roots damaging the drive and has concerns about the damage to water lines. So I thought that makes sense, let's see if we can come up with a solution that would make it so that we could address this one private property owner's concerns and also preserve this great community asset. And the owner, there's actually another house closest to the tree, and the owner of that house has not asked the city to remove the tree. So we're talking about the concerns, understandable concerns of a single property owner, and that's up against the coexistence of a community resource which is this beautiful sequoia tree. So I contacted an arborist, John Bornsworth of the Peninsula Urban Forestry, and he assessed the tree and looked at solutions other than removing the tree. And I've emailed a number of members of the administration and the city council that letter report this afternoon. So I urge you, please, please review that report, he put work into that to assess and to come up with solutions. Now, I know you've heard some differing opinions about whether the tree needs to be removed, and that's why I urge you to look at the report, because that is a comprehensive assessment of the real issues that are at play here. It's not just a glance or a look and a determination that we must cut down this tree, because the presumption should be in favor of preserving mature old growth trees in our neighborhoods. One thing that's not in dispute is that the tree is a, is not a public safety hazard, and there's no immediate need to remove the tree. No one disputes that. Is that the end of my time?
Could you give your address, please?
Please summarize your remarks.
Thank you. In summary, I ask you to please review the report, I ask you to consider your responsibility to preserve this tree for the community. And I ask that we come up with a process so that we can work together as a community to, to have solutions to, when issues like this arise, that we can work together as a community. I know there's limited resources all around, but with the community support, I think we can achieve solutions for everyone. Thank you.
Could you give us your address, please?
Yes, it's 529 Woodby Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Janice Wheeler.
Hi, I'm one of Elizabeth's and Tyson's neighbors, and I have lived on Woodby for almost nine years now.
Your name and address, please ma'am.
My name is Janice Wheeler, my address is 531 Woodby Street. From my house, I can see that magnificent tree, and it's always been like one of the reasons why I love being near a park, but especially after having gone and visited the sequoias in California, I, the redwoods and then the sequoias too, that I revere like these magnificent huge trees. And when this topic came up, I was concerned that, no, I hope there's going to be some other solution than cutting it down. My friends' children have played in the park and they, they like the tree, they like to go behind it and feel like they've disappeared or something, and you know, it's their little camp. But it's, it's something to see and I encourage anyone that's here, you know, that hasn't gone by that park, to go take a ride down Woodby Avenue and have a see and share, sure, want to share that. And I just hope there, there will be a good solution at hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janice. Okay, Bill Whitten.
Thank you, I am Bill Whitten, 702 Case Road in Squim. I am the, the current president of the Port Angeles Senior Center Board, and I am here to thank you for your consideration today on item number three on the consent agenda for a new bus for the senior center. This is something that the senior center has been looking forward to for a long time. We've been doing fundraisers. I really appreciate the support of Cory and Brian and letting us have a part and a say in what this bus is going to look like. We have a couple of our board members here today to lend support and encouragement and membership. We just want to thank you for letting us be a part of how this bus is going to look. We didn't want somebody to just tell us what we were going to get, we wanted to have a part in it. And I can tell you that the vendor that we've worked with really got tired of me saying, number one is safety, number two is comfort. And that's, that's what we went after and I think we have achieved it. And we really appreciate the opportunity to partner with the city on this also. Again, as I say, we've done some fundraising, so we're going to be participating in the purchase of this bus also. We also have a team working to get, to put a rap on the bus, to come up with not just a paint job, but a nice rap, to really represent the senior center and the, and the city. So with that, I thank you very much for your consideration.
Question. Do we have a competent driver for this bus?
Well, Jim and I and Celeste are the current drivers that I'm aware of, we're looking for more if you'd love to join us. We invite you to join us.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
That represents those that have signed the sign up sheet for our first public comment period this evening. Is there, we have just a couple of extra minutes, minutes here. Is there anyone who maybe came in just a moment ago and would like to take a moment to address us? Okay, then let's move on. I've been asked to, an item that's in our agenda as item I1, and other considerations, a presentation on code enforcement of blighted properties to be made by senior legal, senior, what is your title Heidi?
I'm Senior Assistant City Attorney.
There you go. By Heidi Greenwood to make a special presentation and then invite her to come forward at this time so she doesn't have to spend a lot of extra time this evening. Heidi, you would expect to be able to conclude your presentation near 6:30?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I do appreciate you allowing me to pop up in the agenda. I promised to be brief, I do appreciate the irony of an attorney standing before you promising to be brief, but we'll see how we can do this. This is just a presentation on kind of a, a new idea we've been batting around and we'd like some council input on in terms of code enforcement. And to give you a little bit of the history of code enforcement in the city, there was a new nuisance code passed by the city council in 2005, which did strengthen some of our ability to work on some of those code enforcement issues. We had some stronger enforcement and some greater tools, but unfortunately, we didn't necessarily have the resources to go along with that. We had one part-time employee, we've always been a little bit complaint based, and we've always tried to look towards those things that help an entire neighborhood. And then in 2011, after the Great Recession, our code enforcement program was kind of cut to a bare minimum. The 2017 budget has a $500 budget for code enforcement, and I believe that's the same number that is proposed in 2018. However, a number of complaints have been growing. We have tried to get a little bit creative, and that's what I'm going to kind of discuss today, is using some of those tools in the state code that maybe we haven't used. And one of them is found in RCW 3580, and it is a code provision that deals with neighborhood blights. And it was minimally used by some other cities in the past, but it has become increasingly popular. And this is going to just be an example, there was a property in the city of Auburn that was a boarded up house, it was filled with trash, the complaints included vermin. And the city of Auburn had worked with everything in their arsenal to try and get this owner to repair or maintain this property. He had paid, they had fined him, they had threatened criminal charges, nothing worked. He had paid over $17,000, I believe, in fines, rather than just deal with this property. So this is a picture of, of the house in Auburn. This is actually, I believe, kind of about halfway through this process, this is a photo from 2008. And I will tell you that I do not want to look next door to this house. However, after Auburn went through this process, this is the house later. I believe this photo, if the Google Earth was correct, is about 2012, so this is after Auburn had completed this process. And I really wouldn't mind living in this home, nor would I mind living next door to this house. So it can be successful. So how, how does this work? It's, as mentioned, it's RCW 3580, and it's a condemnation of blighted properties. And so these are kind of the steps quickly, there's a council resolution, and then the city condemns the property and files a court action. The court determines the property value, the city acquires the property and then disposes of that. So let's kind of break this down. It works in, with owners who abandon their property, who refuse to repair, who allow drug use. These are some of the tools we have now, abatements, fines, threats, sticks, carrots. Many of these tools are not working on some of our properties. So ultimately, the way this would work was that the city would actually gain title to some of these blighted properties and then be able to sell them for some sort of public purpose, which could include just reselling them to another homeowner. So in order to do this, to trigger this, the first thing that has to happen is that we have to find that the property is a blight on the neighborhood. And so there are three criteria, and the property must meet two of those three. It has to be unoccupied for over a year, a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, which is a determination made by the executive of the city, and it has to be or involved in illegal drug activity within one year. As mentioned, it would have to meet two of those three, and then we would present a resolution to the council declaring that that property was a blight on the neighborhood. And then the next step is that we would file a court action, and this would go under the same eminent domain procedures found in RCW 812 that we would do for any sort of property that we were taking for a public purpose. We'd file an action in Clallum County Superior Court, and that, that action would actually have two steps. The first thing we would have to do is, the court would have to find that it was for a public purpose, and that's the reason for the resolution. RCW 3580A says that if we follow this process, it is for a public purpose. So that's, that's pretty much a given, should we get there. And then the court would have to determine what is just compensation, which is, what is the fair market value. Looking at the fair market value, there's a couple of ways we can come to that, we could appraise the property, we could have, look at the assessed value of the property. But I want to be clear that that is the net value of the property, so we would take the assessed value and subtract out the cleanup costs for the property. So we're not looking at a property in its pristine state, we're looking at the property as it sits right then. So we would net that value. At that point, the city would then have to pay that fair market value to the owner, and we would acquire title to that particular property. This usually goes through the registry of the court. And then RCW 3580A allows the city to dispose of that property using a competitive process. We would have to then get back the fair market value. But the thing that we can do at that point is we are allowed to add covenants, conditions, and restrictions on that title, which can include a timeline for the rehabilitation of the property. And we can say, you must start this rehabilitation of this property within a reasonable time, is what the statute says. So why am I here telling you this? We have several properties in the city that are essentially blights on the neighborhood. And we have done everything within our toolbox to try and deal with these properties. And we have some owners that are digging in their feet and are either unable or unwilling to deal with these properties, and we're, we're sort of running out of options. And so I'm here looking for some direction from council. I do want to be upfront, it is going to require a little bit of money, as at the beginning. We are hoping that ultimately what we will spend will be staff time on this, that we will be able to kind of recoup that at the back end, as we purchase properties and then are able to turn around and resell them to owners who will rehabilitate them. I mean, I find those, those two pictures of the property in Auburn somewhat, somewhat telling, that we can make this work. So I'm available for any questions and comments as we head forward. And I do want to also ask Nathan or Bill if they wanted to jump in with anything I may have forgotten.
I don't believe Ms. Greenwood missed anything tonight, but I do want to reemphasize some points that she actually mentioned at least twice, and I just want to emphasize that this again is approach that we take in very rare circumstances, an approach that we have utilized a great deal of resources to try to gain compliance before we need to resort to some of the methods that Heidi's talked about. But we very much have neighborhoods that are being impacted by some of these blighted homes. They are impacted to the point where some neighbors don't want to leave their front porches or even walk out their front doors because of circumstances in that neighborhood. And I think from a community perspective, that is unacceptable, and we need to find better paths forward that are more efficient for staff if we're going to continue down the road of working with limited resources, we need to find some new methods that will work to improve the community. At the end of the day, I do think there will be some great community benefit that will hopefully increase property values for everyone in the community as we see more and more compliant properties within the community.
Bill, did you have a?
I could always find something to say, but I don't have anything to add.
Very well put, Bill. I think I saw Sissy's hand up.
Just a quick question, how many properties are we talking about? Is it like 1, 2, 5, or 25, 50? What's the num, you know, scale?
You know, heading forward, I can't tell you, I know that should council, you know, give me some go ahead, I have one that I have picked out to start with as kind of a test case. But other than that, I am hopeful that once we start doing this, this will encourage other property owners to bring their property into compliance, knowing that this is a tool that we have, a arrow we have in a quiver kind of thing.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Well, Heidi, thank you for bringing this to us. This is something as council members, we hear about, just, you know, out in the community. We're always getting comments about this, it's always on social media, and it's coming up in the civic groups, it's coming up in the neighborhood meetings, it's coming up at schools, and we want a safe city, a clean city, a beautiful city, and we really need safe neighborhoods. So I know, I have talked to the police chief or Nathan at times about issues that are brought to my attention, and I really appreciate your doing the research, because we feel frustrated when people come to us and say, look at this problem, why aren't you helping? And you are, all are going through the steps, but there's no resolution. So I, I encourage the council to add another tool to the toolbox, and, and as far as Councilmember Brooke, how many properties? One at a time, one property at a time.
Sure.
And I think that's where we're going and that's what we're doing. But by gosh, we all need to be good neighbors, and we all need to provide good neighborhoods for our families. So thank you, I'm in favor of adding the state law, which is already there for our use and enhancement.
Nancy Lee.
Thank you, Heidi, for the presentation. You had mentioned that with one party in particular, they dug their heels in to make it difficult. Do you find that the trend, or would there be some other reasons why they may have a reason for leaving their, their property in this condition?
So I, in, in the case of the Auburn property, we did talk to the, the city attorney of Auburn, and that is the case where we, he told us that that really was a property owner that just dug his heels in and paid, I believe it was $14,000, $17,000 in fines, and would just continue to pay them for that property. I suspect that property is after the city had taken title, and the reason that I suspect that is, when I was doing the Google Earth search, I could see a for sale sign on, on one of the streets. And so I suspect the city had taken title and at that point cleaned all the trash out of the yard, because from, from the pleadings and that, it sounded like it was significantly worse at that point. I know that in some cases here in the city, we have property owners that, for whatever reason, are more on the unable side to deal with things as opposed to the unwilling side, that it may, there may be a financial situation where they cannot, you know, manage a property or a health situation, where things have just gotten away from them. And we have a couple of properties that have burned out structures on them, that have been on there for several years. And we can't, we've tried everything within our power to get owners to either rehabilitate or demolish those structures. And for whatever reason, they haven't. In one case, I think it's more unwilling, and in the other, I think it's more unable. But I, I really, I think behind each one of these properties, there is a story. And we will issue fines, and we have issued fines, and people have just paid And we will issue fines, and we have issued fines, and people have just paid them rather than would deal with it, maybe because the fine amount is less than it would cost to deal with the property.
Well, I'll comment with that regard. You know, back in 2007, 2008, when the economy tanked, the local property owners lost approximately 42% of their average sale price as a whole. And that was pretty devastating to a lot of people. And I know that got a lot of people behind and having challenges, losing their jobs, things of that nature. But fortunately, we've gained back all of that, plus some with a very, very strong market the last couple of years that seems to be getting stronger. So there's a lot of opportunities for people if they choose to do so. They have a much better and higher likelihood of solving that problem. If they're digging their heels in and not trying to work with you so that we can help the citizens and the the overall look of the community, then we're enabling them, and I don't think that's right. I don't think we owe that to the the citizens of Port Angeles. So I would encourage you to work with the folks as much as possible, but I certainly agree that having this tool in the toolbox is very important and necessary.
Well, and to reiterate what Nathan said, this isn't our first stop. This is this is a last stop. We get there when we have done everything else that we have the ability to do. You know, these are not, and in some cases, anecdotally, some other city attorneys have told us that just just the filing, filing the paperwork in the court gets property owners to move. They understand that the city is serious about about dealing with these, and rather than than, you know, face the court determining fair market value, then they they go ahead and and take care of those properties on their own. That's just one more carrot or stick, however you want to qualify that. That does get property owners to to take some responsibility and deal with these properties.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heidi, you did mention the cleanup costs, coming back to the city on on condition of sale. My concern is what about making the city whole as far as lost staff time? So one of my questions, I guess, for the legal team of our city is, could or would this be based on a percentage price of the sale? Would would a 10%, a 5% attachment, would that? I don't want to make a big request for time spent by staff for tracking purposes, but if this actually did come down to a legal case of a homeowner objecting to the price that we took off of to make the city whole again, what what have you guys thought about what could be a a uniform policy price for staff time?
I don't know that we've come up with a number. I do know that in our conversations, we're not, we're not going to make any money doing this. And I understand.
Well, actually, we can't make money because we're a public.
Sure.
So it's costs. That's what I'm worried about here.
And I can appreciate that. You know, this is not a provision that allows us to recoup attorney's fees in a court case. There are some court court statute, there are some statutes that do say if you win, you get your attorney's fees. This is not one of them. The statute requires a competitive process, however we determine we choose to do that. It may be an auction, it may be an RFP, in which case we will try and get the best value for the city, considering our our expenditure of resources in terms of what we what the court determined as the fair market value in addition to whatever time or energy that we put into it. Sure.
So then it would be based on an individual basis at time of trial or award?
Yeah, the court's going to determine, you know, just compensation for the original property owner, and then the city is going to 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 do its, however it chooses to do the sale.
Right. So I guess my comment on this, for my limited time here on council, is I support Councilmember Kidd's position of a per-property basis. I I don't want this to be used as a tool for a bunch of neighbors that don't like a particular person's tree that they happen to grow in their yard, or or how they keep their yard. It needs to be applied for the good of all of us, not just the few people. So the per-property basis, I would fully support.
Well, and there are those those provisions that we have to meet those two out of those three provisions. And so hopefully, just, you know, somebody not liking a tree is not going to be a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare.
Brad.
Well, I appreciate those trying to recover the cost, particularly the hard cost. But I think overall, as property values are are safeguarded, the city's going, through its tax base, is going to make up the difference. We're going to be here for longer than the owner of the property, and so we're not going to be harmed by investing in removing blighted properties.
Rather the contrary, I think city stands in the neighborhood, city stands to gain by making sure as many of the neighborhoods are attractive as they can be. The tax base will naturally rise. It would be easier for those who have reasons to want to sell their homes on blocks that are attractive are easier to sell than homes on blocks that aren't. So there's lots of good reasons that this this may be the the last bullet in the holster, but that it's made available makes a lot of sense to me. Deputy Mayor, kid.
I just, to me, public safety is the forefront of this issue. We see areas and houses and buildings that are not safe, they're a gathering place, and it's just not safe. So I see this as a public safety issue, and I strongly encourage you to move ahead. Thank you.
I think we've heard from everybody but Michael. Michael, would you like to?
Most of my questions have been answered. I would support this fully. And my question, so when it comes to cleanup time, is this something that the city would sell prior to cleanup, or is this something that the city would actually have to clean up?
The answer to that, as all answers from lawyers is it depends. And it really is how the city chooses to do that. If this is a property that you want to keep for some time, then it's probably going to be on the city's responsibility, the city's back, to do the cleanup if it's going to sit in the city's portfolio for a while. If the city is going to turn around and do almost an immediate sale, you could sell it with whatever is there there. It's going to, of course, affect your resale value, but yeah. I mean, it's, the statute is is pretty flexible on how you choose to sell it, sell it, and it does allow you to, other than it it does reference a competitive process in getting fair market value for it, but how you determine that, how you determine you want to do that sale, if you want to do the cleanup first, or if or if it's something that you don't want to do.
Being that the city is selling it, though, is the city liable at all for any type of hazardous oils or asbestos or?
Potentially. And that depends on how we we structure the sale, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for members of the council?
I will go ahead and throw my support to this. I think this is wonderful, and I'd also encourage you to continue and see what we can do about those, some of the downtown buildings that are vacant and empty and moving towards some of those movement in that direction.
So the statute's not limited to residential property there, so we'll see where we go.
All right.
Well, Heidi, Ms. Greenwood, it appears we have not only just a consensus, we have a unanimity amongst the council for you to to proceed, and I think this is an appropriate step forward.
And I do apologize, we are finishing later than 6:30.
Well, I missed, I gave you a bad traction. I looked quickly at the, and we, in fact, do not have a public hearing. We have ordinance and resolutions not requiring. So you could have gone on until 9 o'clock tonight.
I am fairly certain that there is a whole group of staff over there that would have, yeah.
We would have left you do it.
I'm getting the the high sign, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Heidi. Okay, that takes us back to item D on our agenda, late items. Is there any item a member of the council would have be placed on this or future agenda?
City manager has something.
Mayor and council, we do have one item before you on your dais. It's a memo titled Renewable Energy System Incentives. And the reason it's a late item, it came to us just recently, and it has a deadline that we need to go over with the council prior to the next council meeting.
So we can put that under Other Considerations as item I-2. Excuse me, we'll put that under Resolutions Not Requiring Public Hearings, so it'd be
So no other hands, so that we will do that? Oh, Lee, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item four for a comment discussion.
Under consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll be there in just a moment. Okay, thank you, Dan. So that takes us to item E, our consent agenda.
Patrick.
Yes, sir.
A late item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
A while ago, I had asked about another public meeting about the drug issue in our community and to touch on some of the other issues that folks are having. And Ms. Greenwood was kind of a lead-in for that, too. And I thought we were going to have a, or we were going to talk about during a work session, and I did not know, maybe I heard that incorrectly, or if we were even going to talk about it at all. I mean, we're number three in the state, I just heard on the news the other day.
We're number three in the state?
For opioid opioid deaths.
No, we do not have a another community forum set up for that. Staff can discuss that and provide some options back to council, but at this time, we do not have that on our agenda. And we'll be talking about budget later today. We've been focusing on some other things right now, getting through those, so. But we can come back here at a future, either during a council meeting or during a work session, and we can talk about potential future date for that.
Did I miss anybody else? Michael, I apologize. Okay. That takes us to our consent agenda, and I have already heard that, Lee, you want to take some time to discuss E-4, the equipment purchase, the Parks pickup vehicle replacement. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Item three, equipment purchase senior center vehicle replacement. I would support this under one condition, and that's the condition that they bring the bus to show us before a council meeting, so we and the public can go onboard and see the new bus. I remember as a child in kindergarten, we sang a song that the wheels on the bus go round and round. I understand the senior center bus goes, wheels go around an awful lot. So I'm looking forward to a new bus, but I want you to bring it here and show it off so the community can see the new bus. Thank you.
Okay. With that said, then, well, let me read that portion of the consent agenda, one through three first. That would be the city council minutes of August 15, 2017. Spinach report from August 5, 2017, to August 25, 2017, in amount of $2,998,220. And equipment purchase number 1861 for senior center vehicle replacement.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Further comments or questions? All those in favor of items one through three in the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Danny?
Mayor Downey?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to personally thank Mr. Bill Whitten for all the work and time that he put in for to research that senior center bus. Took him many months, and he put a lot of time and injury, energy in it, and we want it to be, to have them have some ownership in it, and I definitely think they did that. So I just wanted to say a thank you to Bill.
Good job.
Good job. Showed up.
Okay, let's then go to E-4, the equipment purchase of a number 1835 Parks vehicle, Parks pickup vehicle replacement. Lee, you have a question or concern?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Corey, you're probably going to be the guy to answer this. In reviewing the agenda packet, I see that we didn't choose a four-wheel drive only based on the cost. And my concern is that Parks and Rec does have the right equipment when it does snow or become icy around here. I have concerns, I don't know the status, I don't know what we have in our city fleet, what you have available either. And I don't want this, my support rather, to be based solely on a dollar need. I'm more concerned about the Parks and Rec's department need. Could you address council as to what is available in the time when we we do get snow and ice here? So could you maybe give give us an idea?
Sure, and I appreciate the question. Anytime our vehicles are up for renewal, we take a good look at what we actually really need. And we do have quite a few vehicles in the fleet, in our own fleet that are four-wheel drive, that really aren't necessary anymore. Back in the 90s, when when this truck was purchased, Parks and Rec had a huge role in the snow plowing because of the few vehicles that the street department had. Over the years, the street department's been able to self-sustain themselves along with other utilities within the public works department and don't rely on us. So we do keep the vehicles we do need to plow, like the parking lots and things of those natures that we're responsible for. So we, this is definitely a vehicle not based on an immunity issue. It was more of practical and what we need.
Okay, thank you. Again, I need to make sure that we, as city providers, we're taking care of the citizens. So thank, thank you for your input. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for the equipment purchase of number 1835 Parks pickup vehicle replacement.
Second. Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. I see, Mr. Mayor, do you have a hand raise for comment and question?
So we have a pickup that we spent $21,000 on in six years. I'm gonna take a guess that that's not a typo. I'd like to think that that pickup's brand new practically. That's a lot of, a lot of money in six years to 104,000 mile vehicle. And it says on the other side, finding, finding increasing difficulty to find replacement I don't own a vehicle with less than 104,000 miles, and I don't have any trouble finding parts for it. I'm a little concerned about getting rid of something that, I mean, I would like to think that for that much money, we've rehabilitated the entire pickup. And my concern is a little bit different than Lee's with the four-wheel drive pickup to a two-wheel drive pickup. I know that we're talking about emergency preparedness, and my concern is a two-wheel drive versus a four-wheel drive pickup in an emergency such as an earthquake, if roads and whatnot were to give out, as to how many vehicles are available to help the citizens that can get around the area. So I have a couple different.
I'd like to speak to this. Thank you. It's the way I read it, this vehicle is 18 years old, has over 100,000 miles. In the past six years, the park department has spent almost $22,000 in repairs. So I'm ready, I'm ready to get a new one that we don't have to spend so much money on repairs. The last 18 years has been too costly a vehicle for the city, so that's my concern.
I think, I guess both went up at the same time. Brad, we'll start with Brad, then Dan.
Well, I just would.
Well, I just would like to second Michael's comments. It seems to me that this is a case where we should have surplus this vehicle before we spent $21,000 on it the last six years. So I just think, I'm not being critical here, I just think we need to use this as an example of maybe putting too much effort in trying to keep the vehicle going. I think that's your point, Michael.
Pretty much, I just.
And I agree with it.
I couldn't see a private citizen that we have to answer to ever spending that much on a vehicle before they cried mercy.
If we were to surplus this vehicle, what do you think would be the cost, the recoverable costs of this pickup that we'll be replacing?
I would have to defer that over to Mr. Fulton.
I'm just taking a guess, but I assume an 18-year-old truck is not going to bring back much money.
Because it, like I said, I'm surprised it's only got 104,000 miles. You know, like, you're right, I mean, my vehicles go close to 300.
One of the things that really is damaging to that vehicle was all the early years using it, snow plowing.
Vehicle, is it just, out of curiosity?
It's just a four-by-four Dodge three-quarter ton truck.
Yeah, over the years, we've been asked to approve the purchase of a lot of different vehicles, whether it be a garbage truck, or a fire truck, or pickup trucks, or cars. And I think, you know, we're a city that does a lot of stuff, and we need a lot of vehicles. But I would really like to see for future requests for purchase, some information that would include the make and model and year, and perhaps even a blue book value of the vehicle that's being relinquished, and also the make and model and year of the vehicle that's being purchased. This doesn't indicate if it's a 2016 or 17, or an 18, or even what model it is. So some of that kind of information would be really helpful. It is nice to know that we spent, or it's not nice to know, I guess, it's just important that we know that we spent this much money. My vehicle is also a 1999, and I've got 100,000 miles on it. And I probably would have gotten rid of it if I would have spent anywhere near this month of money on it. Fortunately, I haven't had to, but I didn't use it for snow plowing either, so. Anyway, additional information that tells us more about what, oh, and then the plan for the vehicle being relinquished, is it going to go on the auction, are you going to keep it for surplus? That type of information, I think, would be very helpful.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Further questions or comments before I call for the question. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Thank you very much. As I stated a little bit ago, we have no public hearings this evening. We do have, need to move on to ordinances not requiring council public hearings, but that takes us to G one, revisions to Title II of the Port Angeles Municipal Code regarding advisory boards and commissions. We are to conduct a second reading and seek adoption of this ordinance. So that in packet is G one. And Dan, I guess you're, I see your name on the memo.
I would be glad to. Mayor and council, I know that during your last council meeting, where I was not present, staff did a great job of presenting this council, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth. We have not had any other comments from council since that time, and this is just for the second reading of that, and it's presented to the council as discussed at the last council meeting. So there are a lot of things that I believe this does to provide more transparency for those advisory councils to the, or advisory committees to the council. It also provides more consistency in the approach in dealing with the committees, and staff can again answer any questions that you have, but we recommend adoption.
I just want to thank staff for this, because this is really, it's clean, it just gets to the point, and we really needed to have this consistency, so thank you.
I think Lee was first, and then Brad. I'm sorry, Brad was first.
Well, I just appreciate that we've been able to sort of sort out, sort of long histories of committees that, you know, got formed one way or another and acted one way or another all these years, and now we're kind of getting them to be a little more consistent. And I appreciate that. I brought this to Corey's attention some time ago, and I think this is a great solution.
Lee. And Lee, before you, I may pay you a compliment here publicly. You know, Lee has been very prominent in this matter. He's brought it up several times, and he, being a chair of a committee, or a co-chair, more than one, I think he knows of wherever he speaks. And I just want to thank you for showing leadership in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to speak to the bit of regards to the history of this. This came forward as vice chair of the utility advisory committee that I serve on. This came about with citizen involvement, and I just would like to urge the council to support this. I think it's a step in the right direction. It's going to give back to being uniform. It's going to let people know that they're going to get a chance, more than one chance, to talk about utility rates, different policy that the different committees look at, lodging tax. You know, we as a council, we appreciate listening to the citizens. So I really am hopeful that the council will support this going forward. It's time that we have this in writing. This is going to be now hopefully adopted into our policy that can be reviewed by anyone as to how to become more involved with their local government. And if you're a resident of Port Angeles, you know, you get front and center to speak to us nowadays. So I just urge the council, as well as the town, to appreciate and support this going forward. We're giving you guys another key for control of your local government, so I hope this carries forward. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other names. Let me provide the second reading. It is as follows. An ordinance to the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amending Chapter 2.40, 2.68 and establish, and 2.68, and establishing a new Chapter 2.25 titled General Provisions to Boards and Commissions, revising term expiration dates for terms of various advisory boards and commissions of the Port Angeles Municipal Code.
I move the adoption of the resolution. It's an ordinance, it says ordinance here rather than resolution, so.
Did I say resolution?
You did, I think. So adoption of the ordinance is read.
Second.
All those in favor, any other questions? All those in favor of this ordinance is read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That takes us to, Kazuntai. That takes us to G two, Budget Amendment Number Two. This will be a budget presentation, and we'll conduct a first reading, and this matter will be continued to our September nineteenth meeting. In your packet is G eleven. And I see three names here, I'm not sure who's going to be, there you are.
Well, this is going to be a team effort, and I will start, and then I'll be passing it off, and I will likely conclude. So we'll wait for the presentation to get up on the screen. Well, while you're waiting for the presentation, this is the first in a series of budget presentations, and actually, what we're going to focus on today is something a little bit unique for us. Normally, we look at a 12-month budget process, although we look to the future as we're billing our budget to ensure that it not only meets the needs today, but it's sustainable into the future. But because of the recent mill curtailment, we decided to take an 18th month budget approach. So let me, let me go back a little bit and talk about the sale of the Napon Mill. As you recall, we heard back towards the first of the year that Napon was selling the mill. And it was looking to sell the mill to keep it as an operational mill in Port Angeles. But there was some concern because the mill was not making a profit, that it may be difficult to sell the mill. And of course, a lot of jobs are tied to the mill, and I want to emphasize the impact on families if in fact the mill didn't sell. And it's not only the people that are directly tied to the mill, but there are a lot of indirect jobs tied to the pulp and paper mill that we have down on Etta's Hook. So we did hear shortly after the first of the year that there was a prospective buyer, and eventually McKinley Paper bought the mill from Napon. And one of the things that we also heard was they were going to shut the mill down for about a year and a half to retool the mill and change the processes in which the mill operates. And they were retooling the mill to make a different product, and they were changing the processes to make it hopefully more profitable. And again, it was losing money every year for the past few years when Napon had it. Now, again, because the mill curtailment was lasting a year and a half, it affected a lot of families. And again, I want to emphasize the impact it has on those families. That's the bad news. And it's hard to quantify what that personal impact is to families. But the good news is, is that unless the mill shut down for a while and retooled and looked at the processes in which it uses to make paper, it would be difficult to make it a profitable mill. And by doing so, by McKinley retooling, shutting down, and changing the processes, hopefully it comes up with a business plan that makes that a viable business in Port Angeles for the next decade and longer. In other words, it's a sustainable mill, a profitable mill. But it takes that change. So even though it has this impact, it's a good thing in that they hopefully are coming up with a profitable business plan. Now, the other thing that a lot of people don't realize is that not only is it one of the larger employers, both with direct and indirect jobs in Port Angeles and in the county, it also is the largest single business in its tax support of city services, those things the citizens enjoy. And the primary reason that it's the largest tax supporter in the city isn't because of property tax, although its property tax is substantial compared to other businesses. The primary reason is because we have our own electric utility, and of all the homes and businesses in Port Angeles, and there are many, the mill basically consumes almost half of the entire electric consumption in the city. That's a lot. Used to be over half. Well, what that translates to, it translates to a lot of utility tax that goes into our general fund that supports public safety and parks and streets. And so when we found out that Napon was shutting down, we looked at the direct impact to our budget. And we knew the loss was going to be temporary, but it would start in April of this year, so we had a problem already with the 2017 budget. And we're taking a very conservative approach, and we're going to assume that they're going to be shut down all of 2018. So we have an issue with the 2017 budget, existing budget, and then we have an issue putting our 2018 budget together, too. So in 2017, we anticipate the loss to be over $300,000. And in 2018, we project the loss to be over $400,000, $440,000 specifically. So balancing the 2017 budget. Well, the good news is, is that in 2016, as we closed out 2016, which we typically do a few months after the year, we had substantial savings from the year before. We don't always have savings. Some years, we just have just a little bit. Some years, we have a lot more than just a little bit, and some years, we're a little bit short. We try to come up with a fairly close budget because we want to ensure we have the services the citizens enjoy, but we generally try to have a little bit left over at the end of the year. And because we had some position vacancies that lasted a while and a few other factors, we did end up with the savings. What we typically use those savings for are those capital projects, those one-time projects that we normally wouldn't be able to do with the operating budget, but if we have a little savings, we put it again into one-time projects. The Vern Burton roof and a few other things come to mind. So we balanced, basically through the first budget amendment this year, we again structurally balanced our 2017 budget by using savings from last year to cover this year. But now we know we have a problem with the 2018 budget, and that's what I mean by an 18-month budget approach. We started dealing with the 2018 budget long before we typically would start putting the budget together, and that's what I'm going to go over now. So what we did, we wanted to be proactive in dealing with this issue. We didn't want to, one of the goals were, we wanted to maintain the same levels of service that we currently provide the citizens. We knew it would be temporary, so we looked at a way to plug the gap in a proactive manner, and we met with each department and talked about how we could come up with, excuse me, one-time savings during 2017, program savings that we could do on a one-time basis, and take that savings, excuse me, take that savings through a budget amendment, so we readjust everybody's budgets, take that program savings, put it off to the side, and use it to help balance the 2018 budget. And I'm very pleased to say that we were almost able to cover the entire amount with meeting with each department and going through their budgets and coming up with those one-time savings. But I need to stress that a lot of the things we did are not sustainable, but if, since it's a one-time revenue loss, we could do it on a one-time basis. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Serena, who assists with putting together the budget.
Okay, thank you, Dan, and good evening. So as Dan mentioned, we met with all the departments, and we determined some savings, and our primary goal in doing so was to take those savings and basically identify them for use in the 2018 budget. And the way we are going to do that is to use the second quarter budget amendment to place those savings into reserves, earmark them for 2018, and then use them as planned use of reserves. So I'm just very briefly going to go over some of the things that were an outcome of those meetings with the departments. And we did go through every department, including the city council. So one of the highlights that came out of the council savings was just a reduction in your travel and training line item. In the city manager's office, the highlight there was during the 2017 budget process, after the budget was finalized, there were some changes to personnel in the HR department. And so those changes resulted in a savings of nearly $46,000 that were not in the 17 budget, and so those are going to be corrected as savings for 2018. In the finance department, we had two areas with some savings, and the first being the finance director vacancy. So that's nearly $86,000, but there is an offset for the recruitment costs in the interim position. There was also some audit savings from this year's audit of nearly $10,000. The legal department had several lines where they shaved a little bit off and just decided that they could temporarily do without. And that included pushing back some computer equipment and some other supplies. In community and economic development, they had some savings from the Valley Street demolition. In community and economic development, they had some savings from the Valley Street demolition of about $15,000. And they also reduced several areas in their professional services, one being savings from the comprehensive plan. The police department had quite a few areas where they just shaved off a little bit, primarily in their travel and training. There was also several areas in their equipment that they just decided that they could hold off on until next year. Fire department was very similar with savings in travel and training, as well as areas where they just felt like they could wait. And then they also did have one capital project for their fire hall HVAC that they are postponing into 2019.
I had a question. In the fire department, volunteer, said volunteer reduction, $10,000. What is that? Because we need our volunteers. So can I just, what was that?
The money for fire department volunteers, the volunteers are paid when they are called back in for drills or called back in when we need additional assistance for medical calls or fires. They receive a stipend amount based on their rank.
So how are we cutting $10,000? Because we need our fire volunteers.
We do. It's just based on historical need. And one of the things that happened this year was when the council approved the five-person minimum staffing for the fire department. One of the benefits of that is that we require fewer callbacks for off-duty personnel. So we've netted some significant savings from that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we also looked at departments that were subsidized by the general fund, and this included the Medic One department. And so the primary decrease you'll see here is in for write-offs for people, accounts that are unpaid. So we looked at historical trends and determined that there was some savings there. In the Public Works Administration and Engineering Department, we found quite a few savings in their overtime, and that's based on historical trends as well. And they also had some travel and training that they postponed. Public Works, the street department, is also subsidized by the general fund, and we looked at that as well for some reductions. And so we found them in supplies and in repairs and maintenance primarily. And those are just things that they can hold off or use existing supplies or minor repairs that can wait. Parks and Recreation, we found some capital items that we can push off into the next year, and there were also some minor repairs and maintenance that could wait as well. One of the other things that we did is, as part of every budget cycle, we take an estimate for medical insurance premiums instead of an actual, because those don't usually come in until after the budget's been finalized and adopted. So we took what we had estimated, and we took what those actuals were, and we compared the two, and we came up with nearly $127,000 or over $127,000 in savings just in the general fund that we can use towards for 2018. So this is just an overall picture of the savings as a result of those meetings, and that's by line item for each department there. But this is the part where finance gets to kind of deflate everybody's bubble a little bit. Anytime that you have reduction, especially in any kind of personnel costs or benefits, we reduce the interdepartmental charges out to utilities. So the total reduction for that was $177,000. Having said that, though this reduces the revenues in the general fund, it does increase the savings for the utilities, so.
Actually, I'm not quite understanding. So when you're reducing the, could you say that again about reducing that and applying to the utilities?
So the charges for services that we do in the general fund, so when we charge, when finance charges a utility for work that we do, that includes our salaries and our time and that, and that includes our benefits. And so when we reduce some of those personnel costs or the benefits associated, like with the medical insurance or whatnot, we reduce the amount that we're charging to them as well. So it basically reduces the revenues in the general fund, but it increases the savings for the utilities. So one of the other considerations that we had to take was the addition, as Ken mentioned, of foreign new personnel that was approved by council. The fire department also had some people who retired, and so they were working with a few less positions than they would normally. So they had some savings there. But unfortunately, because they had less people, they had quite a bit more overtime. So we took the offset for overtime and for savings for personnel and the increase for the rates to pay for the foreign new personnel and determined that $46,000 would be needed out of that savings that we determined. So if we take our $177,000 for charges to the utilities and the $46,000 for the increase on the new personnel, we have $223,000 that we need to reduce those savings by. So our new list, with all of the considerations and the savings, is a savings of $373,450 that we can put into reserves and use into the 2018 for balancing. And what this looks like to the general fund reserve is a little over 6% increase. Okay, Dan, I think I'm going to turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Quick question. You said the general fund reserve has over a 6% increase, so can you go back to that slide?
Mm-hmm.
So to our reserve, we're adding 6% to our reserves this year?
Yeah, the $373,000 is about a 6% increase.
Okay. Our reserves are well over 25%. Is that correct?
So let me, let me go ahead and address that. So we are adding $373,000 to the reserve. This is just a graphic to show you what that is compared to the total reserves. But right now, we require by council action 25% reserve fund balance. And if you can recall, back when we went through our long-range strategic financial planning and we developed new policies, we changed the reserve from 10% to 25%, realizing that that 10% policy was put back decades ago when our economy was doing well, sales tax was increasing significantly every year because the economy was doing well, and also you had the ability to raise property tax by up to 6%. And the need to get into reserves back then was very minimal because financially you were doing pretty well. And if you did dip into reserves, you would recover very quickly because, again, your ability to generate revenue. Well, back when we did this about three years ago, we looked at the economy, which was relatively flat. Our ability to collect property tax is limited at 1%, which is generally below inflation. So we looked at the reserve balance, and a responsible amount was 25% or about a quarter of the year in reserve. And I'm happy to say, as we've talked about before, we are just over that amount. We are at 27% right now. But that 373 will be added as restricted funds. We won't be using them, we'll be using them to balance the 2018 budget. And it would be really easy for staff to go ahead and use, based on our situation, use reserves to balance all of the 2018 budget with reserves. But we didn't feel that was a responsible approach. We were given plenty of warning where we would be financially, we can predict that. And so we took an approach to basically tighten our belt, knowing we were going to have a revenue deficit. And when we come back to the council with our 2018 budget, which is going to be in about a month with your, you'll have your preliminary budget, we're also going to talk about some budget initiatives that will look at the reserves that are over 25%. It's really important that we maintain our facilities. For instance, city pier and the railings, some of the issues we have out there, we need to deal with. So again, I'm really proud of staff for taking a proactive approach, tightening their belt, and allowing us to do all the things we knew as a city to take a responsible approach with, again, our facilities and our infrastructure. So I want the council to know, even though it's a 6% increase to reserves, we are putting that into a restricted status to help us balance the 2018 budget. And, next slide. So these, all of these are pretty much the bulk of your second budget amendment that comes right after this presentation, and we'll be using those again as restricted reserves that will carry over to balance the 2018 budget. And each department after tonight, if it's passed by the council, will have a new budget that reflects those changes in their budget. So the last thing that I do want to say, that this really was a collective effort. This was a really unique approach to balancing not just the 17 budget, but more importantly, the 18 budget. And every department with one round, we were able to make this happen. And kudos to the finance department. We had an interim finance director for a while. I'm happy to say that I feel more confident and comfortable as we move forward with the staff we have in place dealing with these issues. They put a lot of effort in this, but every single department, as you can see during the presentation, contributed quite a bit. So if you have any questions, I believe we can answer just about any of them.
Are there any questions, further questions to the lead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Manager McKean, I'm glad you brought up the city pier and railings. I think of all the city things that probably are enjoyed the most by the residents, as well as our visitors, are our parks. So in the budget proposal, I see $20,000 is being proposed to be taken out of their budget. So are we going to be able to repair the pier? Are we going to be able to get the floats installed finally? Are we going to be able to keep the grass mode? Do you anticipate closing any of the public parks within the city? As well as we've got, I'll let you reply to that. I've got a few other concerns after that, please.
Well, the simple answer is yes, we can. And as we stated earlier, what we did with this is look at those one-time things that will not decrease the services we provide to the residents, also recognizing that we want to maintain the reserve balance so that when we come back to the council with the 2018 budget, you're going to see some budget initiatives that put an emphasis on maintaining what we have, and I believe the citizens expect that. We, for years, have neglected some of the facilities, not because we wanted to, but we've had a lot of budget challenges. But everybody, all of staff, got together and took an approach that I believe council is going to be pleased when we bring the 2018 budget forward. And just to focus a little bit on parks right now, but we have a budget initiative in the budget right now where we're looking at replacing restrooms, which tended to be a number-one issue with our citizens and visitors for quite some time. So we have an approach that is a multi-year approach, and we're starting with the 2018 budget. We're going to look at things that we don't mind bringing our general fund reserve balance down to 25%, and we'll look at those things at the end. When we get the budget presented to the council, we should have a pretty good idea where we're at with the general fund reserve balance and those items that we would bring forward to the council, just two items off the top of my head. We can't do a lot because there's not a lot there, but what the council did tonight with the blighted property, we would look at seed money for that program and with the idea, because of council discussion night, we'll bring something back where we have the seed money, we use that. Then once one gets turned over, we get that reimbursement back, we go for the next one if one needs to be done. That's just one initiative. Another initiative, like I said, is looking at city pier, and there are a few others. So hopefully that helps answer the question. Any other approach would make it difficult to accomplish all those things.
Other thing that's not discussed in this budget proposal is, how will this impact our planned or, yeah, actually, they're in the planning process, our capital projects? We've got Race Street redevelopment, we've got the Transportation Benefit District, we've got some roads where we've talked to the people about. We've also, we're in the initial part discussion, actually, a CSO Phase III. Can anyone speak to these capital projects that we've been planning on for a number of months, maybe even a year, years?
I can start the discussion, and it looks like Councilmember Collins wants to also. But the only capital projects that were put off were those capital projects that were put off that the directors felt would not have an impact. For instance, we mentioned the fire department HVAC. Now, if something does happen, we'll deal with it, and we have the funds to deal with it in reserve to, you know, to address it. But none of the ones that you mentioned, Councilmember Widdam, are any, are affected by this at all. I think it's a very pragmatic and responsible approach, given the circumstances. But again, the TBD, none of that, we're just, the whole idea was to actually have something where the citizens couldn't even see what we did. In other words, on the street, there's no impact. You know, there's an impact to our budgets, we'll have to tighten down travel and training, for instance. Travel and training on a one-year basis, cutting back, very little impact. Some impact, because we want to train our employees, we have to train them, you know, to keep them up on the latest techniques, you know, for fire and public safety, that, you know, that goes without saying. But a one-time decrease in travel and training versus a multi-year approach, we can get away with that, but we can't multiple years. So.
So, Dan, I saw Dan's hand first and then Brad.
So I'm really, I think you did a great job on lots of these adjustments, and I agree that they really make a lot of sense. The one I'm concerned about is the reduction in funds for street repair, because it was just a month ago that the citizens overwhelmingly passed the Transportation District vote. But the one comment that we were getting consistently is that they were insisting that, please, if we're going to pass this and give you the opportunity to have all this extra money through the tax dollars, don't cut back on what you've already budgeted to fix the streets because they're in such dire straits right now. And I'm very disappointed to see a big reduction in street fund allotment, and I would hope that that would be reconsidered.
Brad?
Well, I wanted to somewhat address Lee's comments and.
Before we, I would like to address the street issue, and we understand that. In fact, one of the, one of the primary budget initiatives for 2018 is the implementation of the Transportation Benefit District and ensuring transparency that all of those funds are used for an enhancement, not supplant, but an enhancement to what we do. The $20,000 was under the building and maintenance, things that don't actually deal with street maintenance itself. It's under the street department, but it's not under street repair.
The presentation said street repair.
It's the name of the account.
Anyways, it's under, it's under the, where we deal with building maintenance and things like that in the, in the budget.
Brad?
Well, I was just going to point out that what we're looking at adopting tonight is the Budget Amendment Number Two to the 2017 budget. So some of the issues regarding the 2018 budget, we still have time for those, and the council will still be thinking about those as we get into December. So I think that what's noted here, the simple thing is, is that we are planning substantial savings to offset the $440,000 in lost revenue without having to essentially go into our reserves. We'll still have to go into reserves for some of it, but there was $373,000 as opposed to $440,000 that would be coming directly out of those reserves. Those reserves are being built in 2017 to pay for 2018. So I think tonight, we have a very good Second Amendment in front of us, and I, I would like to move that we adopt that, Budget Amendment Number Two.
We're going to be able to do that tonight.
Oh, it's, oh, I'm sorry, we're first reading tonight. Never mind.
We'll have a first reading in a bit, and then we'll continue this matter to our.
September 19th.
Yeah. The hands on this side of the table. Okay. Lee. See, now, let me go ahead to first reading. In ordinance, the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending the 2017 budget and funds. Again, this matter is going to be continued to September 19. All right. Thank you very much for your presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to H in our agenda this evening, Resolutions Not Requiring Public Hearings. First is a resolution making changes to the personnel policies and procedural, Procedures Manual Regarding Travel. That would be H1 in our packet. And I see Abby, there you are. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mary Downey. So tonight, I'm bringing two resolutions amending the Personnel Policy Manual. But the first one is updating our current travel policy. And a few of the key changes, and I want to thank Finance, they did a majority of this updating on the, on the policy. And what they did is they are recommending some streamlining processes. And so you'll see a few of the key changes are, we're recommending that a lot of the travel be processed through city purchasing cards, you know, like registrations and lodging and that sort of things, things that can be taken care of before an employee actually has to leave to go to travel training. Additionally, we're also recommending that staff put in for travel reimbursements when they come back, so that will cut down on some of the processing time. Advances can still be done, like we currently do, and we'll still encourage those for people that need them for, you know, longer lengths of travel training, that sort of thing. And also, another key change is that all of our travel will now be going through accounts payable, which we have some timelines that we've always had, but now we'll actually adhere to them, I think, a bit better, so that people can turn in their travel, either advance or reimbursement, and then get reimbursed in a timely manner. And then this will also be like a streamline for Finance in record-keeping, audit purposes, and those kinds of things as well. So with that, staff recommends that the City Council update the policy and pass, approve the resolution.
Lee.
Thank you, Abby. Is there any costs? I know it says this at the back of our agenda packet, but the bargaining units have been consulted. There's, there's no possible cost whatsoever to the city?
No, no, I haven't. We didn't really receive any comments back from the union. Again, just minor changes.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Abby, thanks for your work on this. This type of detailed work has to be done, and I appreciate staff time for bringing things up to date for the Chapter 12. Thank you.
Lee, and then Dan. Go for it.
Well, the resolution is on page eight, H8.
Yes, I should, I should. I should read this just for the record. Let me read this first, and then I'll get to you guys. Resolution of the City Council of the City, Port Angeles, Washington, amending the city personnel policy and procedures for city employees. So Dan, and then Lee.
Well, Lee, go ahead.
I would just like to make, make the motion to adopt the amendment to Chapter 12 of the city's Personnel and Procedures Manual dash Travel Vehicle Use and Reimbursement Policy.
I second that.
Okay.
Are we doing that by adopting the resolution?
I believe that's what we're going to do. Is that your request, Abby, is that we adopt this?
Yeah, adopt amending the Personnel Policy, adopt the resolution amending the Personnel Policy Procedure Manual.
Okay. I think that's what I heard. So motion's been made, have been seconded to adopt this matter. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. I think you need to adopt the resolution.
I didn't use the word.
I don't think he said adopt the resolution.
No, I only used what's on H1. So, Mr. Collins, if you'd like to make the motion, I'd be happy to support you.
Okay. I just, we adopt the resolution as read by the mayor.
Second.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to call for the vote again. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any? Nope. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That takes us to H2, Resolution Adding Emergency Preparedness Policy to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Seeking a resolution approval. This is H9 in your packet. Abby, I think you're back on the podium again.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Fire Chief Dubuque for his work on this as well. This is really his area of expertise. And so what we are doing is adding a Chapter 13 called Emergency Preparedness to the Personnel Policy Manual. And this is just to get started into this emergency management preparedness documentation that we're going to, you know, start providing. So our first chapter is a Chapter 13, Availability of Key Incident Management Personnel. There are four departments that are key in any sort of emergency response, incident response, and that's the City Manager's Office, Police, Fire, and Public Works. And so what this policy does is enables them to, to start like a framework, management framework, that identifies key personnel who will be available 24/7, 365, in the case there is an emergency or, or an incident, a major incident response. This policy also recommends that other departments get, you know, a notification procedure as well, like those departments that offer emergency support in any sort of major emergency. And so again, this is just a step in that direction of getting, you know, documentation on, on what our process needs to be and what, what we will be doing from this point forward. And then, once it's established, then anybody at any time can say, hey, I know who is City Manager today, you know, acting while Manager McKean's out, or the Police Chief or the Fire Chief is out. So with that, this, staff recommends the City Council adopt the resolution to add Chapter 13 of the city's Personnel Policy Procedures Manual and add approving, sorry, approve adding 13.00, availability of key incident management personnel.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, and council just add a bit, thanks, Abby. Essentially, what this does is it establishes a 24/7, 365 contact list. So, for instance, in the Fire Department, between myself and the two Assistant Chiefs, one of us is always on duty, always in town, always available, 365. So we also have a similar setup for Public Works, for the City Manager, and for the Police Department. And essentially, what we do is we post that list online so that anybody within the city management can determine who immediately is on duty at any given time. So for instance, if something happened at 3:00 tomorrow morning, and the City Manager wanted to know who the Fire Department Duty Chief was, he could go, he could figure it out, he could look, and it's promulgated, he knows that ahead of time. Same for Police, same for Public Works. And so essentially, what it really is, is just ensuring that someone is always here, someone is always available, and it's someone who has the ability to make decisions for the city and for their respective department. And then what we're hoping is that the other departments, even though they're not necessarily impacted immediately, they would provide information as well so that the primary people who come into the Emergency Operations Center will have a framework of people that they know who's available, who to call, and how to get in touch with them. So that's essentially what this does.
Am I to assume there's like a hard copy that's going to be posted? I know how often I've wanted to break, break this piece of electronic equipment in half when it doesn't work properly. I mean.
We post.
In a major emergency.
We certainly can do that. We post a hard copy in the Fire Department, definitely, so you can always get in touch with the Fire Department. And that's available always through PennCom as well. So just to call to 911 if you absolutely had to, we'd be able to get you that information. But the better way to do it, just to call one of the business numbers for Police or Fire, we'd be able to get that information to you.
But it's available in forms other than?
Yes, definitely. Absolutely.
Mr. Widdam.
Chief Dubuque or City Manager McKean, I'm not really sure who should get this question. But I've, so emergency management, we've got some familiarity lately with the hurricane that went up through Texas. There's another one forecast to hit either side of Florida. What, what occurs during, what I see during emergency management is spending, and currently we have a $25,000 limit on our City Manager. I do know that we can have an emergency meeting to deal with anything that could come up as far as emergency response costs. But I'm just wondering, also, when these cities are, actually, something does happen to them, you know, one of the first people that's usually interviewed is the mayor. And is there any, does staff have any cross-reference to a city our size? Is a mayor or is a city council typically included on this emergency response?
Absolutely. So if, you may or may not remember, but some time ago, we briefed the City Council on emergency preparedness, on emergency management, and one of the things that I said was the first thing to do, let's say, just take an example of, say, was something we had no warning of. If there was an earthquake right now, your first responsibility is to take care of yourself and your family. Once you know that yourself, your family, the people that are close to you are taken care of, the, what we ask is that members of the City Council either report to or contact the EOC, which is in the Fire Department, the Emergency Operations Center in the Fire Department. And so once you've done that, then the people who are staffing the EOC will let you know whether there's a requirement for you to come in directly, personally, or just to provide contact information so that we can get in touch with you. So again, it's, it's actually fairly simple for the city, for the City Council, your primary responsibility, take care of yourselves and your loved ones, and then when you have an opportunity, contact the EOC. So when we have, coming up in September, at the end of September, we're going to have a work session that's specifically tailored to emergency management, emergency preparedness. And one of the things we'll go over with you again at that time are the responsibilities of the council and the references that are available to the council that will enable you to assist the emergency managers as we get through an incident. And you mentioned the hurricane. Hurricane is one of those times when there are basically two types of emergencies. There are the ones that we can plan for and the ones that just happen. So in the event of the hurricane, clearly, what we would be doing, if we had time, would be to contact the council ahead of time. We'd be letting you know what our plans are. We'd be letting you know what we're planning on doing, how we're planning on staffing, and what your responsibilities would be. So for those emergencies that we have some notice, you'll definitely be at the top of the contact list. For the ones that happen that we can't plan for, again, we ask you to simply contact us once you've taken care of your family.
Thank you, Chief Dubuque. My money's on the big shaker, though, on the tsunami. Thanks.
Brad.
Well, I, I just want to focus attention on some of the other personnel that come into play when there's a major incident. And when I worked for the City of Arlington, they made sure that some of us went through the ICA, ICS certifications. And so I went through one, two, three, and four. And it's very helpful. I know that my counterpart will end up in damage assessment or public information or something like that. So I'm hoping that when you look at these certifications, maybe in Arlington, that staff was smaller, but we had a pretty big incident in the OSA slide. I think it's real key that it's not just the first responders that go through this ICS certification. So I encourage you to expand and incorporate all of those. I mean, as elected officials, we're going to be on point, but we're likely to have that ICS certification. And so we're not going to understand the language Incident Command uses, or who's responsible and all that. So we just need to spread that throughout the organization.
So it's interesting that you bring that up. It's kind of like you're looking over my shoulder in my office. One of the things, in fact, it's Abby is here, is it's good that she can talk to this as well. One of the things we did last Wednesday was a step, another step in that exact direction. We have identified the ICS classes that are the most beneficial for a number of people within the city organization to take. So that can be anyone from an administrative assistant to a deputy director to, there are probably 60 different positions within the city where we've identified ICS classes that would be a benefit for them to take. And what we're doing, working with Human Resources, is we're actually adding them to employee job descriptions. So when a person is hired in the city, they will know right up front that one of their requirements within a certain period of time, hopefully within their first year, is that they will be certified in the various ICS positions that we've identified for them. The good thing is the majority of them are available online, but other ones, we're going to be bringing into the city so people can get them directly. So we're working in that direction. We're, we're getting it to people well beyond the traditional first responders are getting ICS training. In fact, every director within the city and every deputy director within the city, all the way down to a number of the administrative assistants, are going to get trained.
I think that's great.
Pardon?
When I was here.
Pardon?
I was going to say, when I was here, the elected officials and department heads went back to Emmitsburg. But I found that while I was in Arlington, the specific ICS certifications were, actually better prepared me for dealing with real emergencies in my job. When we had the big snowfall in 97, I was the one that had to assess all the, and collect all the data for why we had reached the state of emergency. And even though I'd already been to Emmitsburg, I believe, ICS training was, was much more on point. So I think this is a good, a good plan.
I think what Ken was going to say was that even those council candidates in the office that are successful, you can expect there will be ICS training for public officials. There are special classes designed for yourselves that go into some of the terminology, what you can expect when you're called in, what you should expect of your staff, and it's, it's a really good class. So it's, it goes a lot further than staff.
Abby, do you have more for us?
Nope, that's it.
Do any of you have any further questions from Abby or Dan? Thank you.
You going to read the resolution, Mayor?
I'm going to, I'm going to do that. I was taken aback a bit when I noticed on the news a few days ago, watching a uniformed first responder who had tears in his eyes and had visited his, what was remained of his house. First responders are, this was because of Hurricane Harvey. You know, her first responders are not exempt from experiencing the very same things to their homes and families that they're trying to help others with. A very sad moment to witness. Thank you very much. So let me read this resolution. And those that would speak to the motion, please reference this. Resolution of the City Council of the City, Port Angeles, Washington, amending the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual by adding a new chapter, Chapter 13, Emergency Preparedness Policy.
Move the adoption of the resolution as read.
Second.
Any further questions or comments before I call for the question? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any? Thank you very much. That takes us to H3, which is a late item added to this evening's agenda, Renewable Energy Systems. It's on your, by your station on the dais. If you haven't spotted it yet, it should be there. And I believe the memo is, the presenter this evening is Craig.
Right, this was a late item that we became aware of last week with a letter from Washington State University regarding the Renewable Energy System Incentives that we've been participating in for the last several years through the Department of Revenue. So some background, because you probably haven't had time to read the memo. In 2005, the state established a Renewable Energy Program through RCW 82. the state established a renewable energy program through RCW 8216. This past July 2017, the program was modified through Senate Bill 5939. Made a few changes to the program, the incentive program that we participate in, the light ops, electric utility participates in. Increased the annual limits for incentives, annual limits from $100,000 to $250,000 a year, or 1.5% of our 2014 taxable electrical sales, electric sales. Extended the expiration date of the renewable energy program. And one of the things that's causing us to take this to council today versus you, the normal process would be through the Utility Advisory Committee and then bring it to council, is that the whole program is being shifted from the Department of Revenue to Washington State University to oversee it. This transition needs to take place from DOR to WAZU by 1 October. We just received notification that WSU would like our confirmation, whether we would like to continue in the incentive program or not, and they requested our response by 8 September. We just got this letter last week. So we brought this as a late item, so we can, the staff is recommending that we continue to, we continue involved in the renewable energy program. Most folks have taken advantage of the photovoltaic cells, panels that put, placed on the roofs, but it could also be wind generation, and this is small, a small residential-style renewable Many of these, now, we had briefed the UAC in the past that there was a lot of interest and activity on putting solar cells on homes this past year and the year before. That is going to be tapering off dramatically because the incentives have decreased dramatically from Washington State. So we expect the people taking advantage of the incentives for solar panels is going to be reduced. But we'd still like to continue in the program for those residents or businesses that feel as economically, economically beneficial for them, or they are environmentally conscious and they want to take advantage of these renewable energies. But we must respond to WSU by 8 September if we want to continue with the program. With that, I'll take any questions, and I'll, I have Shaleesh Sherry in the audience, who's Assistant Director of Power Resources, who can also, he gets involved in this on a daily basis, so he can also add some details to any questions you might have.
Lee.
Like to say thank you to staff here, and I believe that was WSU, you mentioned, for bringing that to our attention. This is very important that we do continue this local forum for our people here. So I'd just like to make the comment that we, because it came unexpectedly and didn't get a chance to go through our usual volunteer committee, being the UAC, within the UAC, we have many, well, we are, we're going to have three now, citizens at large positions, basically. And it's important that we, as a council, number one, understand it, but it's also important that our committee understands this process. So I'd just like to urge you, Craig, to make sure that this gets included in our next agenda packet and that the whole committee has walked through this process. And to give, I think it would provide value to what we're all about and the programs that are out there.
Absolutely. No, that's a great suggestion, because it's, UAC's coming up next Tuesday, so we'll get that worked in.
Great. Thank you again.
Dan, and then Brad?
My only comment, besides the fact that this is really important and I would fully support it, seems unusual that something this important would only have a total from the time we find out about it until the time it's absolutely required of four business days, because of the weekends and the holidays, or five business days. It seems like a little extra notice would have been really important. I'm just glad you didn't miss the notices, and we just happened to be having a council meeting during this five-day time period, so we could take advantage of it. I'm wondering if we didn't have a meeting until next week, would we be out?
We would have probably taken, trying to take some action to get approval. Yeah, it was unfortunate, the letter was addressed August 18th, and we got it, or it was mailed out on the 21st, and we got it soon after that. So when they saw the 8 September date, due date, we knew we had to do something really quick.
Brad?
I have a question of the young lady you said is in the audience.
Shaleesh Sherry, he's Assistant Director of Power Systems.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I thought her name was Shelley. But her name isn't Shelley.
Hi. Good evening.
My question is, one, I hadn't met you before, so I thought it'd be good to have you come down, address the council. And two, in the past, there are other options for, like solar energy. When we built Maloney Heights, we got a grant from the state. Are these things that can piggyback on each other so that while this may not be a great incentive, a business or homeowner might be able to get other resources? I know Jeff Randall over in Jefferson County is a great resource for that kind of thing on solar energy.
So are you, are you connected with Jeff?
Well, we are not.
Could you turn your, have the mic on so we can, everybody can hear you?
It's on, Mr. Mayor.
It is on, okay.
No, we're not connected with Jeff. What we are currently focusing on is to understand how much solar energy incentive or initiative the community is looking into. There are certain other things here, as Director Fritton mentioned, the incentives, even though the cap has increased to $250,000, the incentives have gone down. So the per kilowatt incentive, which was ranging from 18 cents to 54 cents, depending upon where the solar panels were built and other constituents of the pole system was built, it has gone down from 18 to 54 to 10 through 21. So if everything that you, your system is built in Washington State, then the maximum incentive would be 21 cents. That makes us believe that the interest would be going down, it would be on a downward slope. At that point, we would try and get into some other avenues. The reason why we did not had a, the reason that we did not look into other avenues last year, or last, last year, is because just a statistical number from, from 2000 to 2015, we had about 15 applications for net metering, including photovoltaic and wind generation. In, from 2015 onwards, from October 2015 onwards until about yesterday, we have more than 20 applications in about a year and a half. So in past year and a half, we have received a lot of interest in this, and that's the reason we had no reason to go ahead and find some other avenues to promote it even further. That being said, people are trying to get, take advantage of this before it expires, the older rates. And what they're trying to probably do is to get that grandfathered rate in. We've received three net metering requests in past seven days or so. So that's what we are at. But as I said, going forward, the interest might decline based on just the fact that incentives have gone down, and that is the point that we'll try and go and find some other avenues where we can get more people involved and more people interested in this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, let me read this resolution, and that was, needs to be spoken to in the motion. Resolution of the City Council of the City, Port Angeles, Washington, authorizing city participation in the Washington State Renewable Energy System Incentives Program and City Incentive Payments.
I move to...
I'd make a motion that we vote to approve the resolution and authorize the city to participate in the Washington State Renewable Energy System Incentives Program, including city incentives payments, before the September 8 deadline.
I'll second that.
Okay. Question been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Shaleesh Sherry, he's been here about a year. He is our electrical engineer and our Phil Lusk combined. So he's taken on, he was hired as an electrical engineer, but he's now, also oversees the power resources and power systems aspect of the city staff. So he's got a lot, a big workload.
Thank you. Well, good work, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we moved I-1, dealt with that earlier. That takes us to council reports. I think I, last meeting, I started at my right, let's start on my left. Sissy? Council reports.
Let me try to think. So the one thing I did was that webinar on signs, and it was actually quite interesting, all the legal aspects of signs and whether t-shirts could be signs or not. So it kind of determined whether, how we defined it. So it would be worthwhile that we take a look again to our sign ordinance as to what we can, you know, whether banners are allowed or not. But it was a very interesting webinar on signs, and I guess that's about it for my council report.
Michael?
Just a simple statement. There's a gentleman that speaks often that says, also known as nobody. Everybody is somebody. Doesn't matter what your socioeconomic status is. You're part of our community. It doesn't matter if you're homeless, live in a shelter, or live in a house.
On October 2nd, the AWC Association of Washington Cities is having a regional meeting in Pauls Bow in the evening, and that's for all the cities in this area. So please let the city manager know if you're, it's in the evening meeting. We have a city ban going down, and it's for council members to attend, to meet other council members, and get a legislative update from AWC. So that's Monday, October 2nd, in the evening, from 6 to 8 in Pauls Bow.
Dan?
Yes, two items. On August 23rd, I attended the Clonk County Housing Awareness Community Meeting that was moderated by the EDC CEO, Bob Schroeder. It was attended by about 50 to 60 people, county commissioners and port commissioners and PUD commissioners and lots and lots of people from the local community. And it was well-reported by the Daily News, and I was glad to be a part of that. I'm glad to see that there's a number of groups continuing to look at the housing issues and awareness, especially with the challenges of having accessible housing these days. And then on August 29th, Councilwoman Brooke and myself both attended the Mount Angeles View Housing Authority groundbreaking for the new facility up on the boulevard. And that is going to be one beautiful addition to our community, and they're all pretty doggone excited about it.
Yeah, that was great.
Lee?
I'd like to report that something near and dear to my heart is State Department of Fish and Wildlife, they'll be here this Friday and Saturday in Port Angeles at the Red Lion Motel. They will be taking public comments both mornings. I don't know if Saturday goes all day, but Friday's an all-day meeting. I do plan to speak to our State Fish and Game Department concerning the resolution that we passed as a city council. Not only did we pass, the Port of Port Angeles passed, who else? Councilmember Kidd, maybe you could help me with, who else passed that?
The county commissioners?
County commissioners, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so anyways, it's something that we need to, you know, keep in the back of our minds. These rural communities do have a lot of money that's brought in from, from out of our counties, spent in the recreational fishing industry. So I'm going to be speaking on that part about it. Thank you.
Brad?
A couple items. One, I'm hoping that one or more of you are planning to represent us at Squamaw in this coming month. I don't know the exact date.
It's still a work in progress. Sissy, can you update us on that?
It is a work in progress, because as the council memo says that, because I was going to go on Saturday, but then I have a conflict on that, and then, so I was going to then go on Friday, but Friday happens to be our port meeting. And so that's another conflict. So I'm going to take a look and see if maybe Sunday might work. But, so I am, if anybody can attend that, I don't know if you might be able to go...
I'm not going to be in town.
Okay. Yeah, no, it wouldn't be for the judging. So the judging's only going to happen on Saturday. So we had, I guess he's already gone, someone from the economic development...
You're talking about judging?
Yes.
Mark Abchar is...
So he will be.
One of the judges.
Right.
I'm unable to be there on Saturday, so...
Yeah, so it looks like...
We've kind of gone through the chairs for the best of points.
We have.
Well, I'm disappointed. I think that it's a relationship we need to continue to foster, and this is the best opportunity to do it. So I wish I could go. The second thing I wanted to report on is that last month, I went to the farmer's market, and it was nice and warm. And now my next time will be on November 4th, and I'm not expecting the weather to be quite as nice, but I will be at the farmer's market Saturday, November 4th. And I'll likely be calling in for the next couple of meetings, so I will be helping my daughter.
I don't know if this is the right time, but since the question came up a moment ago, Dan, is there any chance that a member of the staff can attend us in that period of time?
We have not discussed that, I know. I was thinking about going myself. My wife actually was interested in going, based on what we heard about it, but it's not working out for us. We'll be out of town. But we will bring it up during our staff meeting tomorrow, and we'll see if somebody's willing to go.
Yeah.
I know it's a good, everything I've heard, it's just, it's a great event.
Well, it's, it's...
And great hospitality.
They really do. Mayor DeJardine and I have chatted about it, and sometimes things don't always work out. But would you please let me know if, Dan, after your staff meeting tomorrow, whether, and let me know.
The ribs are great.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I can attest to that. Okay, let me share. I was able to attend three wonderful events the last little bit of time. The Peninsula Housing Authority's groundbreaking for the new project that Dan made reference to.
Of course. I would have mentioned.
Yeah. So, well, I was coming out of the hospital. I was very, I was very happy to be there. He probably didn't like what I said, I don't know.
The guy's timing is impeccable. He comes out of the hospital, and he shows up right as he's being introduced to be the next speaker.
Timing's perfect. Yeah, it was perfect, yeah. Unexpected, but perfect. But I did, it was a wonderful experience. This is a project that is underway now. It's a project that will, as I said in my remarks, transformational for this community, for the residents that will be there, for the Boys and Girls Club building, facilities that will be a part of this phase, Phase 1 and Phase 2. I'm not sure how that all will work out, but it's a project development that I know that our planning department has worked very closely with. Credit should go to Nathan West and his staff, and all the preparations and all the permitting issues that have brought the project to the point it is. It's going to be a wonderful project, and I was glad to be there. to be there. I also was able to participate in the opioid overdose, overdose awareness walk from the courthouse building and down to the city pier and the program. I appreciate the assistance of Jim Moran for helping me get there safely and back home safely. But that's, to what Councilmember Meredith mentioned a few minutes ago, these individuals who have been, have had so many struggles in their life, continue to have struggles in their life, every day, almost every hour, to be amongst their midst and realize what they're having to go through is humbling. They're amazing people. How many, I guess there were about 300, I think.
Yeah.
Something like that. Sissy, you were there as well. I think they were expecting at least 300, and to hear their testimonies, those that spoke, there were about, what, four or five that spoke that were, had been, who are in recovery, for them to share their story, and it took a great deal of courage and commitment, and it was just very special to be there. And then lastly, this morning, I was able to, I was able to, was invited, thanks Cory, for extending invitation. Those of you, do any of you know Dr. Kittner? Been a physician in our community for years. He and his wife had a daughter, Quinn Kittner. I should really let Cory share this story, but a very short version is that she was highly disabled, hugely challenged in her life, but she persevered, she was deeply committed to becoming civically involved and to the fullest extent possible, made a difference in lots of people's lives. And today, earlier this morning, the little park we've known in the past, what's it called?
It used to be called Georgiana Park, correct.
Yeah. It has a new name, it's, what, the name is?
Quinn Redlin Kittner Memorial Park.
It honors her, it will be for generations to come. It is a park intended to serve families and youth of almost, of almost any age, to be able to access the playground equipment, and not, not unlike what we have over at Shane Park, right Cory?
Correct.
On a smaller scale, but nonetheless, it will serve the neighborhood, and representatives from the city were there, Cory and I. Kittner family wanted to keep the profile, I think, a little small, but the hospital was there, they're involved, Lakeside Industries, volunteers from their staff were there. It's going to be a wonderful thing. I would urge you to, corner of Chambers, is it Chambers? No, Washington Street and Georgiana, go by there within this next month. A huge transformation, and I was, felt very privileged to be there as well. So that takes us to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Councilmember Brooke is correct, there is a meeting coming up this Friday. It's a joint Port City Council meeting, and the agenda is to go over and update on the navigation easement. Last time we met together with the port, both the Port Commission and the city council directed their respective staffs to work on an navigation easement, and we started working on that. But in order to comply with the terms and procedures of the FAA, which are, give us the best chance of preserving the 5,000-foot runway, it looked like, it looks like it could be a fairly lengthy process. So what staff is going to do is give an update, the port staff will give an update on the navigation easement, but more importantly, we have a proposed inter-local agreement between the two agencies that is designed to be an interim step to help us preserve that 5,000-foot runway. So tomorrow, we should have the council pack it out, and the commission pack it out, I believe that will likely go out by noon tomorrow, and you should expect that both electronically and in your mailbox. Again, that's 2 o'clock on Friday. And the other item, Nathan would like to do a update on the upcoming Race Street public meeting.
Counsel, we just wanted to make sure you all were informed that on September, Tuesday, September 12th, at the community center or senior center, there will be a public meeting from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the 12th, and that's an opportunity to have discussions with the designer of the Race Street corridor project and provide some input. There's also a survey available on the city website that's accessible for those of you who aren't able to make it, to provide input relative to that project. And do keep in mind, too, that council's going to be involved along the way with design reviews at 30, 60, and 90 percent.
So Nathan, I'm.
And for clarification, public's invited to this meeting?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Could you clarify the times again, please?
The time is 4:00 PM to 6, sorry, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 12th, at the senior center.
So those of you here in the audience tonight, I would urge you to try to be there. You're here because you're interested in what's going on. This Race Street corridor improvement plan is another transformational project. For those of you who are council candidates, I urge you in particular to come to the meeting. This will, its progress will fall in your bailiwick.
Is this a, excuse me, is this an open house, or is this an actual three-hour meeting?
It'll be an open house format, so encourage people that have timing issues that they can come at any time during this.
Great, thank you, that, that wasn't clear. Thanks.
So for any of you who are obviously civic-minded, please put it on your calendar if you can. You don't have to stay all three hours, of course, unless you want to. So we're at the second public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who has not yet addressed the council this evening, but like to have that opportunity? This is your, this is your time. All right? I see one person coming forward.
There's not somebody, sir, but there's nobody. My name's Daniel Myrick, and my address is Port Angeles, General Delivery. I'm one of the chronically homeless. Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel. Much love to you, my fellow citizens. It's unfortunate, we look at houses as though they're assets, because their more valuable property is that they're shelter for human beings. And I know the subject that I speak on isn't as important as trees or buses, I don't want to say that facetiously, it's a fact. I want to share with you the story of the most worthless man that I ever met. I was a journeyman, veteran, journeyman, at my trade, and I was on my lunch hour, and I was waiting to make a U-turn at the light, and there was this homeless guy holding a sign on the median, and it said, "We'll work for food." And I said, "Yeah, I'll bet." And he saw me as I took a cigarette out of my pack and returned it to my pocket, and he saw that I had a pack unopened on the dash, so he felt pretty comfortable asking me, "Hey, can I have a cigarette?" And I currently replied with an expletive and some advice about getting a job, because I determined he wasn't worth a 15-cent cigarette. He was worth less than that. In fact, what I determined was, he was worthless. He contained no value at all. So some years later, when I went to become him, to learn from being him, I told my girlfriend, which was really my common-law wife of 10 years, yeah, "If I can make it a year being homeless, I'll feel like a great success." Obviously, I didn't think I could. Six weeks into it, I called her and I said, "Send me money home, I don't know how to be homeless." And I didn't, I didn't know where to shower, I didn't know where to eat, couldn't talk to any of the homeless people, I was afraid they'd spot me, that I wasn't authentic, I wasn't even homeless, for God's sakes, I was putting on a show. And it wasn't without my superiority complex that I went into homelessness. I remember early on, looking in the window of Feed, and I said, "I'm going to make these my community, they're a bunch of drug addicts and genetic freaks of nature." And the moment that thought crossed my mind, a drug addict bent over and picked up a genetic freak's crying baby, and I said, as I looked at my reflection in the window, "Look at you, you don't even have the compassion in you that a drug addict has." And so I began to learn from those. I spent that money that was sent to me to return home on the homeless people, and I let them teach me, those who I looked on and knows that, what it was to be human, and that was my apprenticeship into being human. And now I'm a veteran at it. I've been homeless in 12 countries on four continents in 10 years, so I can relate to what you think when you look out your window and see the homeless condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I will accept a motion of adjournment.
Second.
Motion for adjournment, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen, for being here with us.